Y'all are busy, your principals are busy to get ready for school just in a few more weeks. So what we wanted to do is just kinda put our heads together and get your thoughts on what we want to do with this alcohol revenue that's been designated for our city and for our schools. And just kinda get your thoughts, get your input, and just figure out what you're gonna do. What you think about it. You've got, well, this is a copier part coming in this month. Do you have after our last work session? We had a vote on it, but it's something that's similar what we're gonna... Yeah, I've got copies right now. I've got a couple extra. It's not only one thing. Hadn't voted on it yet, but we... What Scott gave us last night, what we had weeks ago, we had a work session. Basically, we wanted to just kinda get your thoughts on direction we're gonna go, and see what you think. Has anybody got anything they wanna say to start off with?
From our standpoint, we realized that this is not going to fix all of the problems, you know, but it will be something that you didn't have, and so that was one of our reasons for waiting, was it not waiting to have more accumulated?
Yeah, we wanted to monitor for several months and kinda see what is new, you know?
What we worked with.
What we worked on, what we've been doing for our company.
And quite frankly, we thought it was gonna be just a little bit more.
I did.
You know, did we jam?
When it first started, first went west, then they, we had like two weeks in November. Actually, did we jam? And it was like, when we got our first review of income, it's like seventy-five hundred dollars to save for November. We thought, man, that might bring in about fifteen thousand, not based on that. But it had, but it's been close to ten, eleven, twelve each year. Then if we take thirty percent of that, and then try to give it to the schools, and, you know, in a year's time, it might accumulate pretty good. But Clint, how do y'all do it? And, you know, Hackleburg does it, Gwin does it. What's your, how do y'all do it at your office? How do you monitor that or accounting?
Basically, the whole selling point first in the Gwin schools where the central office can keep their hands off it. If money was raised in Gwin, it would stay in Gwin.
Right.
And that was a big selling point to me. And sort of that's sort of the same thing we're gonna pitch to y'all, is that the central office, the county, will never put their hands on that money. We'll, y'all can cut checks straight to the school, and then the school's accounting records roll into our accounting records. So we'll always have the accounting on it, but they'll actually have the money.
Right.
So you don't ever have to worry about it going somewhere other than Hamilton. So that'd be my first suggestion, is like Gwin, you cut three checks, one to each school. And then, you know, we'll be responsible for the accounting on it, but the county never actually touched the funds. And I did wanna go on record, I'm gonna bow out and let the principals talk to y'all, 'cause they more well know what they need. But we are so thankful to y'all for doing this. I mean, it's really gonna help our schools. And if it was just one dollar, it's a dollar that we didn't have, as I said, but we really wanna thank y'all for doing this.
Thanks, thank you, appreciate it.
Well, we hope as time goes, population grows, quite frankly, and I know you're recording this, but, you know, we just hope that people will start talking about summer senior, so we'll have them go to the schools. I mean, that's just fact, just being, is Jan not talking about, you know, it's just a big deal.
Well, and you got to give the last count of credit for it.
Sure.
We're just taking up a lot, what they've done, 'cause they wanted to set them out. It was kinda, kinda skittish in a way to set them out when you don't know what's coming in. But we're here to honor what they did, and hope it helps somewhere down the line.
Am I correct in what, a little bit I've read physically quickly, you are going, if it goes like it's going, we're not gonna have to come over here and make some presentation, right? And I mean by that, I mean, I don't mean
Right.
the once-a-year thing. That's, but I come back, we don't have to come over and say, look, we need three thousand dollars to blah blah whatever it is, that.
I would rather you not have to. I'd rather us figure out a way to get you, whatever amount of money it's gonna be, then you be the ones to decide how to spend.
That's the way, that's what you say.
We can't buy that.
I think what we would like to do is, is cut you that check, and then you divide it equally among your classrooms.
We'd like to see it touches many students.
Well, the thing about that is, we've been, we've been purchasing smart boards, LCD projectors, computers, and of course, you know, the lack of computers through four years, that's it. So we still like about eight to ten classrooms for smart boards. We've had fundraisers, we've done different things to be able to put more technology into our classrooms. If we go try to give each teacher twenty-five dollars, say, I've got a staff of about fifty-three teachers, and when you try to start dipping that out.
It's not much.
It's not much, but we're, we have had fundraisers and different things, and we've put smart boards in classrooms, that we've still got these other teachers that need them. So we've got a lot of technology needs. And we use two copiers for our teachers. We have, we average about six-hundred-and-eighty kids, K through four. And, you know, just copying materials, and Clint will tell you, we're not allocating any money for those copying machines. We just have to figure out how we pay for them, and it's about eleven-hundred dollars a month. So we just scratch and scrape and do the best we can.
Is that for each computer?
For two copiers.
For two copiers.
For all of our, for all of our teachers to use, just to run copies.
Well, that's what we wanted to make, y'all would see.
The smart boards alone, like she's talking about, around, about around fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars, please, I just purchased one, and it's, they, you know, it adds up really quick. Especially when you're selling snacks.
There's a, and I want Clint to address this, 'cause I don't wanna be wrong on this, but there's a, apparently a misconception out there that the state just throws tons of money, or not tons, a few pounds of money into the school system to take care of copied paper and that kind of thing. The teacher gets, I'm not talking about you, I'm just talking about the general, the general public. You know, when, when somebody says, like Dr. Armstrong is gonna, no, it's all we can do to sell enough legal chips and drinks to buy toilet tissue and hand towels and cleaning supplies. Then you throw on top of that copied paper and the price of the copied paper, and then you buy, try to equip a room with a computer or an LCD projector. And folks, there, there is no money out there for that. And Clint, if I'm wrong, please clarify. Almost ninety percent of the county's budget is payroll, and so what's left over to go out to the schools, the county basically gives them twenty-five hundred dollars a year for janitorial supplies, paint and wax. And outside of that, their, their concessions basically have to carry the load of the toilet paper, the soap, the towels.
Garbage bags.
Garbage bags. You know, almost any operating expense there is, and we did pretty well when we could sell Milky Ways and Mountain Dews. But then as the state changed those nutritional guidelines and put us on what somebody called nuts, grass, and water. The nuts, grass, and water just does not sell very well, and so they've really been pinched over the last few years on just being able to buy garbage bags and paper towels.
We're almost self-sufficient as far as everything but salaries and utilities.
That's right.
And you pay our phone bills.
Yes. For the most part, the county covers all the payroll, all the maintenance on the buildings, and then the utilities. And sort of the day-to-day operating supplies are left up to the schools for the most part. Now, pre the economy going bad in two thousand eight, the state gave every teacher five hundred dollars to spend in their classroom on paper, pencils, materials, maps, whatever. And then that, for the last couple of years, had dropped down to zero, but now they're slowly, as the economy's improving, last year they got three hundred dollars. And so every teacher from the state got three hundred dollars to spend in their classroom. And that's why they add, you know, that's why you see that big list at Walmart before school starts, is because all they've got to operate that classroom on basically is whatever they might possibly make at the Halloween carnival, and three hundred bucks from the state. Because it's all Dr. Armstrong can do, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Devers, is just to keep garbage bags in the garbage cans and toilet paper on the rolls. So those teachers basically operate their classrooms on somewhere between three hundred and five hundred dollars a year. And so that's where this money's gonna be a kind of helpful, is, you know, if it, when, as it gets down to the classroom.
Well, that's why then teachers are having to put so much out of their pockets, or they just care for the children. That shows very, yeah, okay.
The elementary school and the middle school are Title I schools, and that's just sort of a federal designation where they get some federal funds to help on materials that the high school doesn't get. But it's not, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it's more than what the high school gets, but, so.
But would some of the money go toward the, the supplies that they would still need after three hundred dollars? And then you could use the rest of it for the toilet paper and the...
That's completely up to the council. I'm not advocating the way Gwin does it, but Gwin has, Gwin at the elementary school, the city council, they, they have a one-cent sales tax in Gwin for their schools. And that brings in a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year split between two schools. And what they do at the elementary school is they have an individual account for every classroom teacher called, you know, Tax Miss Smith or Tax Miss Jones. And then the allocation from the city goes right into their account, and they buy for their classroom what they need, just sort of like the state money, the state classroom material money. At the high school, it just goes into one single account, and if a teacher needs something, then the high school principal just buys it out of that account. Or what they've done in a couple of classrooms, when they've needed like an entire computer lab, then they'd spend the whole allocation, you know, on computers that year. So it, it sort of works both ways. At the elementary level, you've got individual room accounts, and then at the high school, you have a, a large account that everybody uses for the discretion of the principal. And both ways, you know, seem to work well, but that's two options. And of course, the U N C council won't let us spend any money on building supplies, or payroll, or athletics, or janitorial supplies at Gwin. So those are the four big things that they cannot use that money for. In fact, they pretty much use the same rules the state uses for that classroom instructional supply money. It has to be instructional in the classroom, which, you know, precludes furniture and that kind of stuff. High school desks now is eighty-five, ninety dollars.
Yeah.
Depends on, I, I just.
If you get a deal.
If you get a deal, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, don't they?
I paid a hundred and six last year for a new desk.
They had an overabundance of this, and we were able to get fifty-eight, and that's, that fifty-eight cost us forty-five hundred dollars. So I, I wanna, I wanna honestly kinda add to what Clint said. You know, I just, I'm just thankful, and I really mean this, I'm just thankful that you folks saw fit to help us. I don't, I don't wanna, you know, say we want it this way, but we certainly have some needs that this is gonna help us with by giving us a little bit of leeway with it, and don't hold us too terribly stringent with it, because you never know what happens. And we're not gonna spend it frivolously. I think I told Ms. Francis that several months ago. We can't do that anyway, okay?
Well, you're gonna have a record, as Clint said, what these, what it goes for.
Yeah.
Oh, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but in this particular ordinance, Mr. Miller was talking about, did they have to come to us? I believe it states in here that at the first of August, which is the beginning, well, will be around when school starts, and then again at the first of the year. Well, we were trying to simplify as much as we could, but that, other than, where was it? That they would just come to us and sort of give an overall gist of it, was that not pretty much our, our relationship with them? You see where I'm going? I mean...
Yes, ma'am. I think the idea that we had, that last meeting was basically, we have the pile of money, and we give it to the three schools that use as they see fit. And the idea was in August or January to come to the council and talk about how it was spent. It's more of any day, a goodwill kind of thing, to show the public about, here's how your money is being spent, and the good that it's, it's doing. Like the kind of discussions we're having tonight, you know, your average person out there probably doesn't know that you have trouble having paper towels. You know, so, I mean, that's a good thing for people to know, because people can help additionally to this. We did have in there, we talked about setting aside this ten percent to let it sort of build and have more of an emergency fund. And we did talk about maybe y'all coming to us with some kind of idea about how to use that, but I mean, I think everyone's flexible about what to do about that, or even if we should have a reserve fund or not, but that was just one idea we had, but generally...
It'll take a while for that to build up at ten percent, you know?
I mean, what, ten percent of thirty?
Right.
Ten, ten percent of thirty? Thirty percent? So we're talking about three percent of seventy-seven thousand dollars? About, about seventy-two, seventy-three?
For a year, it's gonna be probably close to, it'll be around a hundred and twenty thousand or more.
Okay, and we're talking about three thousand dollars then? Three percent of a hundred would be three thousand?
Yeah, I think we're...
You know, it's gonna take a while
Yeah.
for that to build up, you know?
Yeah, we realize.
If you, if you do that.
Right. That's just a thought.
Right, right. I mean, I don't...
I've seen the ordinance that Gwin and Hackleburg has, and they do have a reserve fund, but they're probably putting more money in it.
Well, does Clint, does Hackleburg not have a, a one-cent sales tax to their schools also, like Gwin?
They do, and brilliant, basically, they have the same, too.
I'd say.
You've got three, three towns in the county that are doing sales tax. But the Gwin, obviously, the Gwin sales tax is bringing in a lot more money than the alcohol tax is. So their reserve fund, you know, has a lot more money in it. They can do some of those bigger projects. You know, if you're looking at, at basically, you know, ten percent of thirty percent of a hundred thousand dollars, that's three thousand dollars a year. So, you know, it'd take ten years to even have thirty thousand dollars. And I can't tell you the amount of grief you're gonna catch when you go to ballgames, and everybody there has some great ideas as to what that money needs to be spent on. It may be to the point where it's not enough money that you wanna put up with the headache of having to deal with it. Do whatever you want to, but you might wanna just split it between the schools.
You might need more upfront and forget the ten percent, and not have a reserve fund. What about that?
I think one thing you see is like, everybody and their brother's gonna have some great plan for spending that reserve fund, and they'll aggravate you to death over it. And then, you know, how do you decide if it takes ten years to get thirty thousand, should he get it, should he get it, should she get it? You know, what's gonna be fair? We're back to splitting it in three ways, probably. So, you know, I just, I worry you'll catch a lot more grief than three thousand dollars a year is gonna be worth to you, you know?
Well, that's why we're gonna meet tonight and see. I mean, this is all proposal we have, and this has not been voted on. It's just, exactly why we come tonight, just to kinda get our heads together and just...
And we definitely wanna keep politics out of it.
Yep.
We want it to be your decision, because we don't know the needs.
That was the one concern that I had originally, was that it not be a quote political thing, unless we might ask here's your money, spend it wisely, make sure you tell us how it's funded. And then we're gonna, we're gonna be bowels, thank you for doing that, 'cause the less headache it is for you, that's what Clint... The less headache it is for you, the better off you are, and the better off we are.
I do think it's important for the public to know how we're spending, though, because, you know, we've got a lot of support from our council and from the community, and they don't know our needs. You know, if we don't tell them, hey, we bought ten smart boards with this, we bought seven smart boards with this. You know, those, these kids go home and they talk about using these, they love it, they love interacting with them. You know, getting on the computer, they love it. I'd love to have ten computers in every classroom, that's my goal. Will I ever achieve it? I don't know. But at, just about the time we think we're doing pretty good, we have a whole bunch go down, and, you know, when you use them every day, that lasts long. So I see this as a way to get some of those things for technology that costs so much, because it's a lot at one time. That otherwise I wouldn't be able, you know, to buy, I'd have to just sort of save a loan.
On your twenty-five-dollar parent donations, do they go into that classroom's account, or do they go?
Yes, we, for each grade level, we put it into each grade level and let them use it.
So it goes to the whole grade, not just to the individual teacher?
Well, yeah, they use it. We've done before, we give to individual teacher in the last few years, we just used it for that grade level.
The parents that have approached me since this came out in the newspaper, that's been their concern. If the city is giving the school the money, why do we need to give that twenty-five-dollar donation? What do they do with that donation? Where does it go? And will the city money not relieve that? And that's been a big question since this has come out in the newspaper, because, I mean, I didn't know. I didn't know if it stayed in individual classrooms, if it went to the entire grade to use, what you did with it. And a lot of parents are hoping that this money is going to take that twenty-five-dollar donation fee off of them, so.
What we normally do is, I like for my teachers in each grade level to do kind of the same thing, because if you've got one teacher doing something, using workbooks and things, and another one doesn't have them, and the parents are, well, they've got this, why does mine not have this? So I like for us to do the same thing per grade level. That's why we put that money in there. And it is spent, you know, among those eight or nine teachers that's in there. Not just one teacher getting a hundred dollars and another one getting three hundred, that's not the way it's done. And they pretty much, we have a grade chairperson for each grade level. Probably what I would do is call my grade chairpeople together, and we would discuss how we needed to spend this money and what we needed to do with it. But we made a lot per grade level, and when they get ready to spend that money, we buy workbooks and things, but if we have any left over, they get together with that grade chairperson, and they decide how they're gonna spend it, and it's gonna work for all of them. We might buy weekly readers for the whole grade level, or National Geographic for the whole grade level.
I like Tammy, I've been hit with that, that, you know, people think, and I, and I'd like to see it, if, you know, if we give you this money, we're going to and give these parents some relief of these donations, or, or sales, or donut sales, or whatever they do. I mean, that's, that's what the majority of people that hit me up is, hoping this, this money here will take some of that away. Do you see it?
Twenty-five dollars is not much.
Twenty-five dollars is not much, but it, well, it is. If you've got, if you've got a family that's not three and four or five children, it's a lot.
It is per child.
It is a lot. It is, but it's, it's not required.
No, it's also just a donation, you know?
It's a donation, and it's written off in the tax.
If you're able to do it, we, you know, we're proud to have it. If not, we don't, you know?
But the child don't suffer if they fit, if his parent didn't bring the twenty-five dollar in there.
It's just having a classroom.
No.
Glad, I hadn't heard anybody, nobody's mentioned that to me, but...
Me either.
You must not have been at Walmart, because they've just put out the list.
They just replaced the list.
They put the list out, and I was down there while they were stocking them, and people were picking them up, and it was like, was all that picture in the paper? Why y'all go through that money? Why they gonna use it for? You see this donation out here?
Trust me, what, all that?
Mama, she's not saying that, they don't talk.
Um, we don't get a lot of donations as much as you would think.
No, I would think so.
When, we did before the economy got the way it is, but now we don't, we don't, we don't get as much. We just fall back on, you know, having to have a fundraiser, or, you know, a carnival or something, and that's, that's sad that we have to do that. But you think about it, the industry that wants to come in, that looks at Hamilton, the first thing they wanna do, if they've got children, is come down to schools. They wanna come check our schools out. And if we don't have technology, if we don't have all of the things that are up and going, this is a technology society right now. We don't have those things to work with, like other schools, they're gonna think that we are not on top of things.
Could be very discouraging not even come.
I've had, I've had five or ten families come through each summer just to look at the schools.
They do.
And decide where they wanna live a lot of times.
That's exactly right. I've had them come here, and I've had them to go to other towns, they'll say, well, we're going so and so and so and so, to look at their school. And, you know, we're doing, our teachers are doing their best with what they've got to do with. But y'all, they get so excited when they get a piece of, if they get a new computer, they just dance, or if they get, Mike Milton gave one of them a smart board a year while back, listen, they, they jumped up and down. It just takes so little to thrill them, but they use that every day, every day, in teaching, in all subjects.
Clint, help me out here on lab fees. And by that, I mean, biology is a required course. And is it correct that we can now not charge a lab fee for biology?
That's my understanding is that anything is required for graduation, you cannot charge a fee for it.
I want you to hear what it just got through S A. My biology teachers are supposed to, because through the courses study, they're supposed to dissect frog, dissect a worm, or dissect this. We cannot, because it is a required course, we cannot charge a fee for that. And that's the only way that we have of supplying the biology class with frogs. And they don't give frogs away. You may go get them, but you can't buy them, okay? And what I'm, and by that, what I'm saying is, the, the middle school and elementary school have their own set of problems. We do too. The, the big difference is, I happen to have a senior class, a junior class, the Kiwanis Club, and when they do a fundraiser, that goes to that club and that thing. We don't have, I, I can't even, I can't even take your, your fee money now to buy frogs and that kind of thing, or ag supplies. Am I right about that, Chad? I mean, Clint? Chad Williams teaches a, a class, and I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to even have a fee for that if it's career preparedness is now a, a required course for all ninth graders. So we, our hands are even being tied more so now. And, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you that we're gonna buy all smart boards, because I've got so many other things that are required for the course, that we don't have the income for that. So we've got to be very careful about how we spend this money.
Well, that's sort of beside the point. Still, what our goal is, is to benefit directly the child.
That's right, that's right.
You know, I don't care about dogs or computers, or what you buy, as long as it benefits the child.
Prevents the fees.
I'm not quite sure every citizen of Alabama has the right to a free public education. And so if you require certain courses for graduation, you can't charge a fee, or it's no longer free.
Oh, but, so that not being able to charge a biology fee for a while?
Well, for as long as biology's been required to graduate. So it, it, you know, I will have a science club, okay, and they'll, they'll take a membership club fee, that's not what I'm supposed to say there, or fees not, can't be used, uh, membership dues, okay? And then they, they will work and do the best they can with those dues. And it's, it's in the classroom, it's not frivolous spending. Again, it's in the classroom, or field trip, or something like that. But again, our hands are being tied more and more about what we can and cannot charge, or require.
So many needs in so many places, that however you direct that money, it's gonna be greatly appreciated.
That is exactly right.
I don't think any of us are here trying to guide you into a certain thing, because we got so many needs and so many, just pretty much anywhere you wanna point, we're glad to have it.
I don't know how you survive as well as you do.
We did a lot better before they took sugar out of our ability to raise money.
And he is right on target, and it's worse on her. And he is right on target, and it's worse on her than him, and it's not a lot better for us at the high school. You know, if the FDA had its, uh, way, it would be poor quality watered-down milk. And grass seed, just like you said. And apparently they, people in Washington do not understand that McDonald's and Hardee's opens up at five o'clock.
Kids don't like it.
They don't like it.
They're bringing them home, but they don't like it.
He's probably heard lunchroom sales today.
We went from, Steve, am I right, between seven and eight hundred meals a day down to five hundred?
Or less.
Or less.
Same ones to you.
There's more lunchboxes being taken to the cafeteria than I've ever seen.
We bring in about twenty percent of what we did this night, twenty-five percent.
Supplies keep going up.
And that may be, you know, biggest portion of that cost what you've had to take out, but maybe too, the economy, people having to send.
A little, yes, a little bit of money.
Well, keep in mind that.
Sag, lunch is to the school.
All the schools, middle and elementary are Title I because of just what you're talking about. We, Clint, would technically qualify. We don't get any money, but we qualify, high school. I'll tell you how it's gone. A few years ago, we qualified for some interest-free money to remodel the school, right, Clint? We had to have, and let's say it was thirty-six percent on free and reduced meals. We, we qualified for that with six kids more than minimum. Okay? Our free and reduced lunch now is over the, probably over the sixty percent mark. Economy is killing us, and you too. But when our, our kids, I don't even know it, I, I don't think all of our, um, free and reduce eat, free and reduce. You know? Because the meals are now being dictated, no salt, no this, no that, and it's.
Baked everything.
Everything, it, it's killed the lunch program. And for the sixty percent of kids, or sixty-five percent of kids, they get two meals they can count on every day. Cafeteria and lunch, and breakfast and lunch. So it's a lot of factors that go to play in that thing, but it's.
Are those the same guidelines for the prisoners, their fee?
Yeah, well, at our place, we're the only one in, in the state that's on a wellness diet.
I just wondered.
You know, we don't, we don't serve nothing like it, but it's because, you know, of our, our, our facility being a medical facility. But that's, that's all we serve as well is diet. Don't put that in paper here, 'cause I cleared that through downtown, wasn't it?
Not potatoing you.
There are just, just like Mr. Hoffman talked about, there's some dark on those guidelines that you gotta go by now. You, you can't sneeze and it'd be right, so it's, 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 it's put a hurt on us.
Well, you gotta be dedicated principals and all, put up with all this. Can't even focus on teaching the child for trying to adhere to all the rules and regulations that are brought down on you. So, so your general feeling is you'd rather have, uh, all the money up front and just forget the reserve funds, or, I mean, it's just, I guess it's just a broad.
I'm just thrilled to get it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with you one way or the other, but I think you got to, I think like Clint said, is the headache gonna be worth the, the?
That's what I'm, after figuring out how much reserve fund I might raise, to me, it's not gonna be enough to make a dent in that.
I look at it, what, what more we can do with that little bit of extra.
I mean, another five hundred dollars each, or a thousand dollars each, go a long way.
Well, you know.
Settle that and build up for five years, or ten.
Fifty more dollars might buy another computer. Fifty more dollars might buy more workbooks. You know, it might pay on a copier.
Well, and that's what I was.
It takes that dollar to make that hundred, so.
We, we ordered some copy paper. It was delivered yesterday. You know, another, uh, five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars is, is gonna mean that we've got that money to do with to replace the copy money that we, that we are, that we just got to spend it. So it, it's, it's one of those things that.
We should get the building in our pod area.
I'm just, I'm, I'm like the other thing, I'm very grateful on, on behalf of the middle school, and, and any money we get, we'll spend wisely. And toward, toward the students, and, um, it's a digital age, and when, you know, when we come through school, uh, teachers marked on the board with chalk, and, and these days, it's, it's all hands-on. You can go up and touch a smart board and use a computer on the board just like you could sitting in front of a computer, so. Uh, it's a different world in the classroom now, and the, and the kids are totally different learners. They're hands-on learners, digital learners. And we just, we're trying to adapt as quick as we can to, to put everything we can. For instance, I've, uh, my project this past year was putting, uh, thirty iPads in my building where I can rotate them between classrooms, let the teacher check those iPads out. And there's several kids that have iPads, I'm sure, but there's hundreds that do not. And it's, uh, it's a technology that's, uh, that's really helped in the classroom, and, uh, they just go nuts over it. They have little stations they can go to around the classroom, get to play with it, and do all the, the little apps and educational games, and, and learning from those. And it's just, you just see a world of difference when you can put something in their hands that they can really enjoy and, and jump on to. It's just nice.
Do you see a time when it won't be like textbooks back anymore, you take these?
Oh, it's now.
I say, yeah, five, ten years, you don't see a textbook.
There's a school system that just gave out computers. I'm thinking an online safety class that they're doing. And one of the ladies in the class said that their school had just bought laptops for every child in that school.
Coleman and Huxton, now we're going.
They were talking about all the, you know, the rules were, and, and I think Winfield has done that. And it's gonna cost each student seventy-five dollars when they get a laptop.
And that's been doing, they, they've screwed it.
And their, their, their textbooks are going beyond that.
What you consider cost of textbooks these days, it's.
They're high.
Well, when you, when you, when a textbook, you got sixty-five bucks, you know? At a minimum. You got seven of those.
But our kids, when they go out to get jobs, you know, they're gonna have to be able to use computers. They're gonna have to be technology savvy to compete. So, and, and we have to stay up with these times, because we've got kids that don't have this technology at home. And we want to provide them access to that at school, so they won't be left behind. And they will be, I'll have it. Scott, is there any problem, uh, with, uh, changing this up? If that's what we decide to go with and leave off the ten percent?
Not a problem at all. It's whatever you go, you wanna do, and whatever works for the school.
Well, that would even simplify it more, wouldn't it, you know?
Make it about as easy as it could be.
Make it more simple for them. That, that is true.
Or if we had a lot more money going in reserve, it'd be worth keeping it. But with not that much going in in a year's time, or five years' time, I don't know, it wouldn't be worth it now. You know, it's just a thought, but.
And we only got point, what was it, point five-five percent on that last CD we renewed?
Yeah, we just renewed a hundred.
A hundred and seventeen.
Hundred and seventeen thousand dollar CD is point five-five.
That was the highest, yeah. And the other was point five bucks.
Of course, the board isn't done to snap on the letter, didn't it, that, that you made?
There you go.
Just not.
Just not.
Saving.
A half of one percent.
Yeah.
I'm seeing it at the commission all the time, they're renewing it, and that's all you get.
Put it into the bed. Put it out your hands.
Put in the bed.
You can at least look at it, you got it somewhere.
Yeah.
I think make this section number four as well, real, well-written. Define what can be spent on, I think that's a really good idea.
Why don't you read that?
That's, that's basically what's due, it's got, did it clean?
Yeah, it is.
Read that, let the principals, or do, do y'all have a copy of this?
Yes, I do.
Oh, oh, okay. Does that cover everything for as you all concerned, or clarify?
I guess somebody needs to read it for the camera here.
Great. Disbursements to the schools hereunder is intended to enhance student academics. These disbursements may be used only for obtaining classroom educational and instructional materials, equipment, and supplies. Equipment necessary for classroom education or extensions of classroom coursework, and to provide educational experiences for students. The disbursements may not be used for maintenance, except for maintenance of classroom equipment used for instructional purposes, janitorial, house cleaning, and lunchroom supplies or equipment, salaries, supplements, or wages, or for purchasing office equipment. So that pretty much limits it to classroom use.
Well, there's one thing, was there a reason, Scott, that you did not put in there, no mortar or bricks, you know, before, in some of these others? That was in, there was some inclusion of that, could not go for mortar or bricks, and that type of thing. I think it's pretty well understood.
And I've had a bunch ask me, they, they won't go to athletics, they just, it'll go to the classroom.
But when it says academics, that pretty well defines it.
And one of them did have brick and mortar.
Uh-huh, yeah, I think just gin or hackett burg, I've got those right here.
They, they have that.
I'm glad it could be added.
They have, have us.
Yeah.
Let's just, I'm not good. It says only for obtaining such and such a reservation athletics, so I guess that would, that would exclude athletics in that respect.
Well, if somebody's not clear about it, this would probably say, you know, if you find out any kind. You just say you go with that, you know, sure you wouldn't be.
Well, you know, I, I, I've sit, y'all, two, three terms on the, on the, y'all, the advisory board, and I, I know you got problems, money, in other ways, and we, and we'd like to get a bunch more money, but you gotta understand, we've got problems too. You know, we got, we got debts that, that we gotta take care of too, but, uh, like y'all all said, any dollar I have.
You can't sell it.
I wanna ask you something that probably, that I have been approached with. Um, and Clint probably can answer this better than anybody. Can you tell me, I've been approached about, uh, the problem that Chris Cook is of, is alternative, uh, school, and that they don't have anything coming in. Now, I realized, uh, in finding out, doing a little research, that these children come from across the county, do they not? Not, it's not happening, so my thought there is, well, if Hamilton put anything in, then the, if they come from the other schools across the county, then they would, it would be necessary for them to put something into that particular program. Are they funded in any way?
It's a county program that's funded through some state at-risk funds amongst other things, including some state tobacco settlement money.
Uh-huh.
So I, I wouldn't advise you to include the alternative school. It's more of a county-wide program.
Okay, so they do get some state funds, then, okay. Okay, well.
That's more of a program that can, what teams used to run, and, uh, what reserve three used to run.
But then they still express, they, they have needs, you know, that aren't met, so what's the answer? And I know that's not what we're talking about here, but my concern is.
They have other avenues of addressing the needs that these three Hamilton schools.
That do not. Okay, well, then that might need to be explained.
And, and, and the name of that school's Marion County Alternative School.
Right, exactly, okay, all right, that's, that, I need, I just had to ask that, because I was approached with it, so.
I, I wouldn't advocate including them.
Okay, okay.
And councilmembers came in, the office, they, they.
No, I just, you know, I, I have to think about that separate fund, you know, I, I don't know that it'd be worth.
Working.
Couldn't, my client said, I think it might be more frivolous to be worth. I mean, I wish it was, but, you know.
You could always revisit that if, if tax revenue dramatically increased.
Yeah.
Okay.
Scott, what about you?
I think they add, I think the best thing that the city is to make it as easy as possible.
I agree. I'd rather have the principals actually be like the convenians, instead of having members of, you get too many people trying to tell you how to spend it, and you're gonna have trouble.
See, some of these others do have that.
Cause I don't wanna be the one doing that, and I don't think we do as a group. We, we know you're gonna spend it, and we're gonna see a report of how you spend it. You're gonna tell us how you spend it. And they're gonna be glad to do it. They have a way of accounting and showing how you're spending, but.
And it's not so much telling us, it's not so much telling us as it is public. Public, that's right, because it's their money, and they're entitled to that.
I agree.
And there's no reason for them not to.
And we can do that at council, maybe, you know, a couple of times a year. If we do distribute the money, we can do it in the next few weeks, in August, the first one, and then do it again in January.
Hey, as long as you give us a check, I'll come every time you want us to.
Would y'all rather have it in two disbursements, or?
Yeah.
Would y'all rather have it in two times over the year, or just one time? What would be better for that?
Clint, what do you say?
I, I don't have any opinion either way.
I think probably twice a year would help, because we have.
Again, it's.
If you got, again, and then.
Because you don't have to wait so long to, to do some projects, or finish some projects, or, you know, why let it sit there? It's not gonna draw my, my interest when it could be helping. You see, we first thought about, um, and it was the sole intent of the last council. It was there when it was voted on and passed, that it, just what we're talking about, that it be directly, and there was such a need. And we had, uh, Belinda and Simone from the Board of Education, well, Clint, you came, didn't you, to the meeting that night? And, uh, and it was discussed very thoroughly, it was deciphered inside and out, and trying to come up with the best. But we have had numerous copies from other schools, other towns, you know, and, and trying to bring all of this together to see what would fit Hamilton the best. And then we had this advisory committee, and then we talked about, uh, giving it out once every quarter, you know? Well, that really wouldn't be much to do anything with. It'd be something, but, and then we decided, well, uh, came down to the twice a year, and, uh, to me, about the time that that first is running out, well, it'd be the first year, and you'll be or the, the, January, they won't need it again.
Republican, I'll send it tomorrow.
How would work best for you, Jen?
Well, it just needs to be, you know, within the, I'd like to get rid of it before the end of this fiscal year, which is the end of September.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, New Year starts October first, doesn't it?
So, um, I would say go ahead and do it, do it now, yeah.
Do it now, and then? First of October?
Yeah, you're gonna have some, you're gonna have some, but we don't wanna make them wait till the first of October, though.
First day of January, and first day of August.
That will still, it'll still be fine.
I think that's fine.
January, first day of August.
Right.
Yeah, it's still gonna be one time, and, and it's still gonna be, you know, it's gonna be twice.
No twice, twice in the fiscal year.
It means still fine.
So first of August and first of January?
Yeah.
Right about that.
If we.
Well, it's.
Oh, if, yeah.
Would, would it be, and there's no, as we said earlier, there's no interest in anything, but say the economy changes in there. There actually is interest in our bank accounts, again, would you put it in, into a, a bearing account for the?
We can, we can put it in an interest-bearing checking account.
Until the disbursement.
In that way, we give it first of August, it'll have time to build, have built up by January.
That, I mean, that'd be easier for you, that's easiest to do, run it through like that.
We meet again, uh, runs next August fifth. That's our next meeting. This is the nineteenth, is that today's school starts the? Correct. Kids start the night, correct.
And that's Monday.
And that's Monday. So we meet first and third Monday.
We need to, we don't, we don't need to cut a check until we, we get all of July's.
You're waiting to get all of July's?
From R D S, and, uh.
We've got.
So that'll be the first week of August.
We've got all of June already, that's on this report I gave you. At the end of June was, twelve thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars, of course, you'd be thirty percent out of that. But that's the total now. That's the total now we get. So actually.
We've collected, no, what's the total we've collected?
Seventy-nine thousand nine.
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
Oh, just June.
Well, the total for June, right, the total is seventy-nine thousand.
Seventy-nine, nine thirty-two, forty-four.
And it'll probably be another ten or twelve thousand.
If you divided it three ways today, it would be seven, nine, nine, three, two, four to each school. But that's not counting July's.
And that's actually, that would be more than six months, though, if we did it, because that's going from November, the second week of November, all the way, so you're gonna have about eight months here and there.
And if you.
By the time January came, it might not be that much, because you wouldn't have as much time unless we cut it off in June.
But we have seen it go up.
We have seen it.
And we have more selling than we did. So I kind of, I kind of think it's gonna stay somewhat where it is right now. It may drop back down to ten, you know, from like it's twelve-five per June, it might drop back down to ten. But it's, it seems to, in the last couple, two or three months, kind of leveling out.
Is the state's total up and it won't figure yet? That's gonna hurt a little bit, probably. Or affect it a little bit, not do much.
Now, all you three principals do realize what Scott was talking last night about council meeting, that this tax comes off of the licensing of wine and hard liquor.
It's the excess tax on beer and wine, and then.
Excess tax, right, on beer and wine.
And then the license tax on the grocery receipts on liquor.
The beer tax is just as a general tax, like a loaf of bread, like you said.
That's right. Something similar to the gas.
Sokey drink, yeah.
Get the hard liquor in.
I have to deal with you, but I'm not that one.
Get some hard stuff in.
Oh, yeah, there you go. You had the vodka on the front page, so.
I didn't, that was last taking the picture, I don't know, I don't know how he picked that bottle, but.
Redraw that line there, you've got a bunch of people tore up.
I'm just reporting what y'all did, don't look at me.
Let's figure something. People have made it complicated.
They've made it complicated, I'm afraid, but. But that's the simplest thing to me, divided in thirds.
Well, obviously how this could not please everybody, but we know in politics, there is no way. And you deal with parents every day, and there's no way to make everybody happy, so.
I promise they'll put it to good use. I know.
We're not worried.
Been having stretches of dollar for years. My wife's been up there twenty-eight years, I know. Been through several administrations, I know how times have been tough over the year. I just appreciate y'all, kind of appreciate the job you do, you got a tough job, yes. Thankless sometimes, I know it is, you hear a lot more complaints than you do compliments, but I appreciate it.
We don't hear a lot of compliments.
I know, we don't hear me. But I know one thing, I would put our administration, our principals, our schools, and our students against any school anywhere around here, and we are just as talented, just as smart, just as good as anybody. So we don't have to take a backseat to nobody. So we may not have as much funds as some schools, but I'm as proud of our students as anybody in this county, and I, we should be promoting, I do that.
Well, Mr. David, I feel like with the Aggie Plaza coming on, and you've already, as Wade said last night, visualize the end result, and the revitalization starting, what, on Monday, and, and having this to enhance our schools a little bit, and so, you know, loo-va-loo, you can, it's a long time, you think, well, nothing, not anything's ever gonna happen, and then all of a sudden, it starts taking shape.
It's gonna be beautiful in front of the middle school.
Morning, that would just be so nice, I'm so proud of that.
And we'd like to thank all the volunteers and donors for everything they've done up there.
A lot of work from under there.
So Tammy, do you still have your answer about the twenty-five dollars? I saw Ed's going like this when you were asking.
Well, the twenty-five dollar parent donation goes per grade level, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's within that grade level.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a donation.
That's what, I didn't, I thought.
It's not a fee.
No. Man, the poor, but it's just a donation.
And tax for that.
And, and I do say that we have a lot of parents that'll say, if you have two or three in that room, that if the parents can't pay that, let me know, and I'll be glad to put in a little bit extra. And when we have all festival, we have things, we have parents that are willing to pay a little extra for anyone that can't pay. We never have a child that's not able to participate, that always participates.
But the irony of that question was that because the economy is, some people can't donate the fee anymore, so that may have helped replace some of the money.
Well, it's not a fee, it's just a donation, it's just a donation to those teachers to buy things for that room that they normally wouldn't have, or workbooks.
But, but, you know what I mean, the, what the donation replaces that, because some people can't make the donation anymore, so.
A lot of teachers paying a lot out of their own pocket.
They do, they pay a lot out of their pockets, they sure do.
What does the numbers look like, Dr. Armstrong, as far as the kids that are coming up? I mean, I know we've had some huge classes, are they, are they?
We lost two teacher units this last year based on numbers, but our numbers are back up for one teacher unit already. But tomorrow, we're still trying to get our kindergarteners in, for some reason, we can't get our kindergarteners in and get them pre-registered for school, so we still don't want any kindergartners we're gonna have. So, but we're about six-eighty right now, I would say hundred and forty-five, fifty per grade level, you know, somewhere.
I know, that's some big classes coming through the middle school.
We had some big classes, mate.
College class had a hundred and sixty-something, she's in fifth or sixth grade, I don't know about now, but.
How many graduated this year?
We will end up with, it's eighty-four marched, and we will have, probably eighty-six, eighty-seven, something like that. I say eighty-four marched. That's how many chairs we had out, and there was especially a kid that did not march. Two or two that did not participate, so we had eighty-six that actually graduated, and we've got a couple in summer school, so we could, we could talk about almost ninety.
Has that been running up by like that last few years, those numbers, or is this up or down?
It fluct, no, it's not really not down. It's.
A little better than it has been.
It's better than it has been, even though we, you know, we start off unfortunately, we'll start off with a hundred, you know, in the senior year. Stephen, how many, how many are you sending us this year, a hundred and four?
Hundred forty-five, hundred forty, hundred forty-five.
Hundred forty-five freshmen these time. Yeah.
I can tell you, when I came back three years ago, of course, I was away for ten years, and I could go to the school assembly in your building, and I could tell the difference in the number of kids that would be. So it had gone down, I think, for a while, maybe by.
It, it fluctuates. That affects funding, doesn't it, so many. Teacher units, yeah.
What grade level are they, where they drop off, they drop out?
Whenever they are at seventeen, and we have, we have a few kids who are sixteen coming into the ninth grade, and that's a detriment to them. They, they can be here with us till they're twenty-one. The state has made it, they lack, gotten a little, let up on this a little bit. But it, you know, when they started in ninth grade, they had to be finished in four years. If not, they counted against your graduation exam, and it's so stinking complicated that you couldn't figure it out if you wanted to, but there's some, there's some changing going on in that, but, end of the tenth, eleventh grade is when they hit that seventeen mark. I think I still sixteen, I mean, my senior year, because I graduated at seventeen. I did be seventeen. Going in my senior years, barely dropped. But, but there seems to be, it's almost as if it's a negative, that if you don't graduate, you know, if you don't graduate at eighteen, there's something wrong with you. You don't say that in college, if you go to college, what's, what's a big deal about four years, five years? How many majors now, you're finishing five, four years anyway? But that's not what the state has looked at it. I will tell you that we are beginning a new program this, this fall. It's a career tech program, and it's, it's gonna be titled Health Science. And that's not health slash science, it's health science, which is somewhat of a pre-nursing. And right now, we've got almost thirty kids in the eleventh and twelfth grade who are interested in it, and we're gonna probably open it up to tenth graders, and offer a couple of courses this year, and then bump that up to a couple more next year, so that by the end of their senior year, to start with tenth grade, they can have six courses toward health science career. And so we're, we're excited about that. Hope that that goes. Like I said, with thirty kids, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we'll have some classes, offering two classes on campus. So that's gonna help us out, you don't have to go to Bevel for this.
Do you bring in a, another teacher for that, or?
We'll have a part-time, part-time teacher for that. With a, with some type of health-related certification, or license, or whatever you call it. Again, that's, that's where our, our needs are going to be more hands-on for kids who are gonna potentially wanna try to drop out. We're, that's where we have a lot of kids who go to Bevel, and automotive, and welding, welding's really, it's gotta be that.
That's a hot field right now, welding.
If you go, if you go to Bevel and get a welding certification.
You get a good job.
Mike Reed does an excellent job with those, those guys down there, and, yeah, he's putting them in jobs. We also have a thing called sort of credentialing in some of our career texts, where they, Chad Williams will, will take some training, so that when his kids get through with a course, they will, they will almost have a union card, that they will be credentialed, that it's valid in any state in the nation. It's a national credentialing, that they will have gone through safety procedures, those kinds of things, gone through, let's say, electrical wiring, that they've got some training that we, we know it will, and we hope it will, help those kids who go to get a job. That, you know, it's, it's like, I, here's my, here's my card, I'm credentialed in these areas. And that's gonna help our kids who don't wanna go to college. Unfortunately for us in our area, we don't have enough jobs, if, if everybody went to college, we don't have enough jobs around here for them to go, but we got need for electricians and plumbers and that kind of thing.
Do the kids understand that technical is probably the way to go, are they beginning to grasp that versus?
It's not the kids.
Well, the dads, yes, the dads. They want that leather chair and CEO title.
It's, and we need kids going to college, okay, we, we're not advocating not, but we also understand that kids need, there are, there's a demand, there's a need in our communities for.
Skilled.
Skilled, technically related job kids.
But that's where the jobs are, that's where the high-end jobs, a lot of the jobs.
This welding? Oh, it's there, if you want it.
Oh, you gotta show up on that.
That's right, you gotta, if you can, you can strike an R.
But the challenge is getting the parents to understand.
Yeah, it really is, I mean, it really is, you don't, you don't.
Well, there's certainly no shining in it, it makes a good living.
It's, we're trying to give an even mix of that, right?
Well, couldn't change person, and always necessarily afford you or guarantee you a job either, you know, so.
I know, we ran IAD in the paper for, you know, our head mechanic passed away, you know, he had a heart attack, and Scott ran IAD for a month, and we didn't have very many people, you know, it's, it's just a level paid technician for motorcycles and stuff, twenty-eight, thirty dollars an hour, you know. It's basically what he gets paid, you know, so, there's, you know, college isn't for everybody, you know.
Two thousand and two study came out, State of Alabama, that by two thousand, two thousand, the study came out, that by twenty-ten, seventy-eight percent, seventy-six or seventy-eight percent of jobs in State of Alabama would require two years or less training. There would be two point five million jobs available in State of Alabama. So three-quarters of those would give you about two million jobs, and that two million jobs would need training. Not quite that many jobs, but be having done a good job in education, prepared for skills. That's a well-known subject, though.
I was writing over that Bevel of the day, going, hearing the same things you were talking about. Of course, a lot of them too had to know computer skills.
Well, it's, it's that way, I mean, you're a technician now.
It's not just a straight tree mechanic, I mean, it's very technical.
Lynn, look at your, your surveying.
Change a lot over the years.
Oh, it has, it has.
Well, you know, and it used to be, David's big on this thing about, well, you used to make cars where you could give them to them, you could work on them yourself if you wanted to, now, you cannot do it. He was acting, not one of them, but he couldn't even, he wouldn't change oil. Took a act of progress to try to do it, and I don't think he ever did. So, things are changing.
Y'all lost my time right a long time ago.
So, so Mayor, what, the meeting, I mean, the next council meeting is that first Monday of August? And are y'all gonna vote on something in some form or fashion? I hope we can, we can, I mean, y'all have enough information tonight?
I think so.
I do.
So we can kind of get our heads together and have something by then, so we can keep the ball rolling pretty quick. And, and then after that, then sometime in the month of August, we could expect, give some kind of.
Since we have all July then, won't we, Jen? By then, so I would think that not long after that.
I obviously want to, because we come to conclusion, and I, you know, I think we, if y'all got any questions for Scott or the principals, it's about changes on this, we can go ahead and kind of get that worked out, but, I feel comfortable.
What we talked about with y'all.
Now, how are these checks issued, say, to Dr. Armstrong, if there's no? Well, I didn't mean it literally, you know. Okay, sorry, put that in there, Ed, don't.
Where does your Ferrari end?
But you may, I know what you mean, you may need school. And when we present the check to you, we can do it in council meeting, give it to you.
That'd be a good PR.
I think it'd be a good PR for the schools.
Of course, your problem's gonna be run up to you, how much did you spend that for?
I think every one of us could roll right off to him, what we're saying, more, I think that's a bit of a problem.
Scott, you got anything? You don't have anything? I'll just, I'll say thank you for coming. I think this has been good for us, because we, I felt like it was good for us to get together and y'all and kind of decide how we wanna do this. Well, I've got a lot of information tonight, but I didn't have them before yesterday, so, do y'all agree? I feel a lot more comfortable with Clint explaining all the things to us, and thank you for coming. We appreciate y'all having us, we really appreciate it.
We hope that a year from now, we can look back and say, it did make a difference.
I'll bet you it, I guess. Appreciate y'all. So that's it, I guess, appreciate y'all.